Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this forum for candidates for County Council District Five. As you all know, there are nine individuals on the county council, four of them at large, and five represent each their own district. We are in District Five, and these gentlemen are vying to be your council representative from District Five. This Candidates Forum is sponsored by the Tacoma Park City Council, and it's specifically to inform residents about their choices for candidates for County Council District Five. My name is Kathy Porter, and I'm going to be moderating the forum. What I'm going to do is just go very quickly over the way that we're going to run this, and then start with opening statements. We're going to give each candidate three minutes for an opening statement, two minutes to answer each question, and a closing statement of two minutes. If you have questions that you would like to ask the candidates, there are cards, index cards like this being passed around. Bruce Williams is passing around the cards and will collect them. Bruce is the mayor standing in the back of the room there. I see we have Mr. Thames here. Welcome. Can you come on up? And if you have questions, Bruce will collect the cards and bring them up to me. We will try and get as many questions as we can in the time that we have. Our aim is to conclude this forum at nine o'clock. There's a beeper in front of me, and that's how we will time the candidates, and I would ask everyone if they would conclude their answers. There's going to be a brief beep when you have 30 seconds left, and then a continuous beep when your time is up. What I'm going to do for the opening statements is I'm going to start at this end, and then the first question will then... Chris Barkley will have the first, will have the opening statement. Evan Glass will have the first question, then we'll go around like this, and then at some point at random in the evening, I'm going to reverse the order, just to keep everyone on their toes. All right. Are there any questions from the candidates? Okay, so we'll begin with three-minute opening statements. Mr. Barkley?
I feel like, is this mic on? Can we be heard? Great. So my name is Chris Barkley. I am running for County Council. It's really good to be back in Tacoma Park. I've lived here for 17 years, moved away, and have moved back to Tacoma Park. One of the reasons why I'm running, and the most important reason why I'm running, is because I'm very concerned about economic inequality in Montgomery County. I'm extremely concerned. I've been on the school board for the last seven years. In working in our schools, one of the things that I've really seen is I've seen families struggle to figure out how to pay their rent, to struggle to figure out how to deal with their challenges, how to deal with their children and keep their children safe, how to deal with finding a job, how to deal with making sure that this county can work for them. When my family moved here in 1996, we moved from the district because we were really concerned about having a safe place and a fun place to raise our children. Well, every family deserves that in this county. But if you look at this district, specifically District Five, in many ways I call it the "tail of two districts." You have the Tacoma Park area, you have Silver Spring where there's much more development and much more activity, but then you go to Burtonsville, and you go to White Oak, and you go to other areas, and you don't see that development. You don't see that growth. You don't feel that safety. Here in Tacoma Park, this is a place where you get that sense of community, and you have the ability to talk with your neighbors and spend time with your neighbors, but at the same time, we know that there are families who are struggling with food insecurity, they're struggling with their children in school, not getting the opportunities that they need, and we need to make sure that we have someone on the council who's really going to fight for them as much as they fight for us, who have the resources and have the ability to work for our children and to work for our families. So one of the things that I look at is, how in fact do you find that right person? For me, what I say to you, and what I say to voters all the time, is that you need a leader who has experience, who has their feet deeply rooted in our communities. And because of my work in the schools, my work in the community, as a cluster coordinator, as somebody who's worked on the Tacoma Foundation, somebody who's dealt with... Is that my 30 seconds?
Thirty seconds.
Awesome. Somebody who's dealt with all kinds of families and dealt with county government, I understand what's going on in our homes, I understand what's going on in our community, and we need experienced leadership to move us forward. So I'm asking for your support, June 24th. Remember, early voting is June 12th. I look forward to answering your questions, and you getting to know me, and hopefully me getting to know you a little bit better. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Evan Glass, and I'm just going to introduce myself. The reason I'm running is because I love our community. I moved to Montgomery County, Silver Spring in particular, about 14 years ago. I moved to Summit Hills Apartments at East West Highway and 16th Street as the holes were still in the ground for downtown Silver Spring. The plan was in action, but it wasn't yet there. And I would live in my affordable apartment, park my car, take the metro down to Washington, DC for work. And as Silver Spring began emerging, I liked what I saw, a livable, walkable community with diversity that was beautiful, and I wanted to put my roots down. And when there were apartment buildings that started being built further down East West Highway, I wanted to move in there, and I did, and that we call "South Silver Spring." And what ended up happening was thousands of people began moving into this brand-new community, and there were a lot of problems. There was crime with some of the motels down in that area off of Georgia Avenue. There were parking problems, and you had a community that didn't know each other. And so we went to Mayorga, long-lived Mayorga, and talked, and what ended up happening is we formed the South Silver Spring Neighborhood Association. I became the first president of that. And over the next six or seven years, we really made that neighborhood a true community, bringing people out of their apartments, getting to know each other, having street festivals. When new restaurants would open, we would encourage buy local programs. And all the while, I was working in downtown DC. I worked at CNN. I was a journalist covering national politics. And my bosses would think it was funny, cute even, that I would leave work at 7:00 in the evening and come back home to go to a meeting about pedestrian safety or about crime. Because for most of us here inside the Beltway, the world begins on Pennsylvania Avenue. It's the White House and the Congress. But when you really think about our daily quality of life, it's not Pennsylvania Avenue, it's Maple Avenue and Flower Avenue. That's why I got involved, and that's where my local leadership really started to flourish. I then joined the Board of the Silver Spring Citizens Advisory Board, which for, unlike the enlightened community of Tacoma Park, Silver Spring is not incorporated. So this board is the closest we have to Tacoma Park City Council. We provide advice and management guidance to the county executive and the county council. And so I've been the chair of that board for the last two years. I recognize that there's a need for more affordable housing in our community, so I joined the Board of Montgomery Housing Partnerships, the county's largest nonprofit provider of affordable homes. I recognized that as growth was occurring, and there was a lot of concrete around us, we needed to preserve our environment. So I became a founding board member of Conservation Montgomery and helped enact last year the first tree bill in Montgomery County where for every one tree a developer cuts down, they have to replace it with three. And so the reason I'm running is I'm the local leader who's been doing this for a decade. I love my community. I've been forming community, and I look forward to working with you here in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry. So when I got here today, I had a very angry parent waiting for me, because I run a youth group in this community of 150 kids called Man Up. In fact, we are meeting right now. There are about 15 boys across the hallway in a room, and there are about 10 girls in the back of this building meeting right now. And the parent is one of the girls, because she got into a fight today, and she wanted us to talk to her daughter. Well, we were already having an intervention with her daughter, actually, before her mother even arrived, because that's the work I do in this community every day. Those are the kids who live on Maple Avenue. I know those kids, and I work with them every week through Man Up. I work with you through a lot of different programs. So how did I get to this place where I'm in this community, getting yelled at by parents who are happy that we're actually working with their kids? I was focused on national issues, a lot like Evan. I'd been working on the Hill as a senior staff member to two members of Congress, where I wrote over 22 pieces of legislation. Probably the most important was ethics reform passed after Jack Abramoff scandal in 2006. And Jack Abramoff is a resident of District Five, so he's not going to be voting for me. So hopefully, a couple of you will vote for me to make up for his lost vote. But then a kid named Ty Lamb was killed riding a bus home from school near where I live now, and I realized that all that national work didn't mean anything if I came home to a neighborhood filled with the same violence that I thought I left when I moved here. So that's why Man Up exists. Started off with 15 kids, now it's 150 kids from Maple Ave, New Hampshire Ave, Houston Ave, all over this city, kids who need a little bit of guidance, a little bit... They're referred to us by local police, and some of them just come to us because they live in the neighborhood. So that's how I bring home my experiences, not just working with the kids, it's getting the budget together, getting money out of the city budget and the county budget to make sure we can work with our local young people, building up a community advisory board right now that actually one of the council members, Kate, was the first member of. But more importantly, it's bringing it home. Another way I brought it home is working on Flower Ave. You mentioned Maple and Flower, so I'm going from Maple to Flower. Flower Ave, I brought in a million dollars' worth of federal funding, working with the city, in fact, to get stormwater runoff mitigation on Flower Avenue. Now, it's on the border of, as you know, Silver Spring and Tacoma Park, so it benefits the county and the city, but most of the residents that it benefits are actually... Because the runoff goes towards, into Psycho Creek, most of the residents that it benefits are actually Tacoma Park residents. So it's another way that we bring it home. Another way that we bring it home is we run, I work with Jared Smith to run a youth program, a second youth program, feeding 120 kids every summer, every single day, because these kids are on farms. But in the summertime, kids don't have access to the meals they get normally through school. So that's why we started a program with Washington University to feed these kids, bring in reading tutors, and basically improve their lives. The bottom line of it is, I'm doing the work right now for you, in your city, every day. North on 24th, please vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Hucker?
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you, Kathy, for moderating. So I'm Tom Hucker. I live right up Flower Avenue with my wife and two very young little boys. I mention that because that gives me a daily reminder of what a personal stake I have in the quality of our schools, and our public services, and the quality of our community overall, over the next 20 years, because my little boys are going to be here, you know, whether I am or not. I'm a... I know so many of you, so I apologize if I'm boring you, but I'm a trained professional activist and community organizer by profession. I had, I've been trained by some of the best organizers in the country, and I have years of experience in the science and art of bringing people together and building alliances and coalitions to get things done, specifically to make government do what it wasn't doing ordinarily. That is, when you think about it, a great set of skills for an elected official to have, and it's been very useful for me to draw on in the eight years you've sent me to Annapolis to represent you. Before that, I spent 10 years in the environmental movement, working for the Sierra Club and other groups, and I spent seven years building up and running Progressive Montgomery and then Progressive Maryland, bringing together 40 very different churches, community groups, synagogues, unions, immigrant groups, all around the same table to create a common agenda along with 15,000 individual members to project power in both the county council and in the state legislature around a working family's agenda. And we got a lot done. We passed the Montgomery County Living Wage Law. We helped to pass the Thornton Initiative to invest a record amount of money in our public schools. We helped to pass tax fairness legislation and close the Delaware Holding Company loophole, and to expand health care in the state of Maryland. Then in 2006, you all elected me twice now to represent you in the Maryland General Assembly, and it's been the proudest eight years of my life. I'm very excited to have served during this historic period in the General Assembly, when we ended the death penalty, we passed the Dream Act to make sure all our Maryland students could go to Maryland colleges, we passed one of the toughest gun safety laws in the country, we invested record money in our public schools, and we, of course, passed marriage equality, and we're the seventh state to do that. Individually, I've been able to build a lot of coalitions to get historic bills passed as well. The first living wage law in the country that lifts thousands of our families out of poverty and into the middle class, groundbreaking bills to make sure that every newborn in Maryland is tested for congenital heart disease, and the ending the practice of adding arsenic antibiotics to chicken and getting 15 tons of arsenic out of the environment, and numerous environmental bills as well, working with some of you. Also, taking a lead role in helping to pass the minimum wage increase for 400,000 Marylanders. I was brought to the White House and given this pen by, thanked by President Obama, given this pen by Governor O'Malley. The point is, this job is... We're going to sound very light on policy. This job is really about experience and accomplishments. I hope you'll judge us on our records and whether we have real proven policy accomplishments to demonstrate that we're going to be successful on the county council. That's what I offer, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thames?
All right. Good evening. Kathy, thank you for being a gracious moderator for us, and I'm going to do something I normally don't do, and I'm going to read out a statement that I wrote, and it goes, "My name is Reverend Jeffrey O. Thames Senior, and I am a leader from a small town in Indiana, much like what we have here in Tacoma Park. We were one of the thriving municipalities in the county that our town was in, but we were also seen as a county's piggy bank. We then, as I come to find out, had to stand up for ourselves and let the county know that we are not your savings or emergency funds town. And when we did that, the county then got its agendas and budgeting and financing in order and left us alone. Having the ability to understand that successful municipalities within a county is not meant to have services withheld or used as a bargaining chip to bring to the municipality, in line with what the county needs. I've worked with city police departments across the country to make sure, with the limited amount of resources within the city budget, the support was there from the community. Now here, I will make sure that the taxes paid to Tacoma Park, to the city of Tacoma Park, functions as intended and aren't merely passed on to the county without the services being rendered in the city. I'm the father of five. I'm the husband to my wife, Chandra, for 14 years. The PTA president of two elementary schools, Crest Haven and Roscoe Nix, and I'll be happy to serve you as a county council representative for District Five, realizing that the city of Tacoma Park is a sustainable city as it is now, and making sure that you are not double taxed for city services and then also taxed at the county level for the same services that the city is already providing. This isn't a pass-through. I will make sure that the services are provided for the community to feel safe, working with the community and working with the children that's here, working with the families that need second chance legislation and amendments passed in order for Tacoma Park to have a strong workforce. I will work with the county to make sure that renters, I'm sorry landlords, will not use Tacoma Park as merely a basis of enriching themselves, but instead use their ability to have rental properties as a way of strengthening our community. These are the things that I will do for the city of Tacoma Park and the residents of Tacoma Park as your representative at the county council level. One thing that you will find about me is I'm an action candidate. I'm a boots-on-the-ground guy. I'm a Marine, and we believe that everyone counts, and we leave no one behind. And I will bring that same ability to Tacoma Park if you elect me on June 24th. Jeffrey Thames.
Thank you all for your opening statements. The first question. Tacoma Park residents pay taxes to Montgomery County for services like the police department that are actually provided by the city. If these tax payments are not rebated to the city, Tacoma Park residents are then taxed again by the city for these same services. Montgomery County and the 19 municipalities, other municipalities in the county, have been looking at how to fix this tax duplication issue since 2006 without success. How will you support Tacoma Park's efforts to fully repay the duplicate taxes to the city? Please be specific. And I will start with Evan Glass.
Start with me. Tax duplication is a problem, and I know it's been an ongoing problem, and it was last reviewed back in the late 1990s. It's time for a review again. I know it's working its way through its council. Nothing concrete has emerged, but the meetings are taking place, and I'm hopeful. Now, to take a step back at how systemic this problem is, I do know that Tacoma Park is the only city municipality in the county that has its own police station, its own police force, and that is a relic of the time when the city was divided between two counties. And we need to recognize that that duplication exists, and the county needs to realize that if you did without the police department here, it would cost much more money on the county's end to duplicate those services. Now, also, Tacoma Park is unique because you have the only library not within the Montgomery County library system. It is your own, unique Tacoma Park library. And so we need to recognize these differences. And as Jeffrey eloquently stated, Tacoma Park should not be Montgomery County's piggy bank, flat out. You know, this part of Montgomery County, I think, is the piggy bank to too many different jurisdictions, be it Montgomery County or the state of Maryland. And so we need to recognize the needs that exist here, and the needs are great. And so the way the formula currently exists, it's part property taxes and part cost of services. And so we need to recalibrate those formulas. As I said, it was last debated or revised back in the late 1990s, so nearly 20 years later, we're certainly due. And I know that one of the formulas, especially for the police department, is the county would likely pay for 40% to 50% of what the cost of the police department is, if we were to call everything even. And so if the city chose to go above and beyond those services, which you're currently doing now, that would likely come out of the city coffers. And so we need to take, again, we need to take a deep dive at this. We need to figure out how to make it equitable for everybody, but 20 years is too long, and I pledge to continue working with the mayor and with the council on this action.
Thank you.
Well, I'm the only person on this stage who's a Tacoma Park taxpayer, so I actually need double taxation, and it will improve my life. And a big part of... I'm also the only person on this stage who's already been fighting against double taxation. The big problem that the community has is that the last council member on the county level didn't support it. Right? That's the big difference. The big difference is when you elect someone who lives in this city who is subject to the same type of taxation because he's a homeowner in the city, like all of you, or most of you, then you will, you're going to get an advocate who's never going to stop fighting for you. So as someone who served as one of the founding members of the Police Chiefs Advisory Council, I know what our needs are from our police department, and that's something that I can be an advocate for with Ike. I love Ike. You know, he gave my wife an A in her torts class when he was a law professor, but he hasn't been supportive of us on this issue. And I think what really takes, what it really takes is an advocate who not just lives here, because we have other council members who live here that actually want to disincorporate the city, but it takes someone who lives here, who's a part of the fabric of this community, like I have been for several years, who's worked with the police chief on fighting, on getting the funds that we need from council over the past several years, and that's who I have been, that's who I will continue to be.
Thank you. Yes.
Thanks. Well, I certainly agree. Tax duplication is a real problem. I've always thought you should do the right thing, whether or not it's in your immediate financial self-interest personally. I have been a supporter of ending the tax duplication ever since I've represented, you know, Tacoma Park in the General Assembly. I've met with the, talked to the mayor and the council members about it many, many times. The county clearly takes advantage of Tacoma Park. Tacoma Park, you know, our property taxes here are the highest in the country, in the county. I think the county fails to live up to its obligation to transfer appropriate amount of taxes back to the city. And, you know, I'm committed to work with you and your elected leadership at the city level to pressure the county and to be the chief advocate on the county council to approach as close as we can the 60% of reduction of wealth revenue that has been proposed. We also can't do it alone. We have to work with other municipalities around the county to do that, and we have to work closely with our state delegation. Some of this is going to require changes to state legislation as well. And many members of the state delegation have municipalities in their districts, not just District 20. District 17, District 18, District 15, I don't think District 19 or 14 do. We have to build coalitions across with other council members and other members of the state delegation to change the state legislation to get that done. So specifically, I'd support an amendment to allow Montgomery County to charge a lower property tax rate within a municipality. I'd support legislation to remove the tax transfer cap, and I'd support legislation to remove, to require the county to reimburse the city more. I also support multi-year agreements, so we're not subject to the variances of the county budget annually. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we use Tacoma Park as a model and not a mold, we can have the first-rate amenities in other regions of the county that we have here, which would encourage homeowners to move to other regions of the county and not seek out Tacoma Park because of the amenities and luxuries that are afforded in the city of Tacoma Park. What I'm saying is that I would support everything needed to end the duplication of taxation, because being from that small town in Indiana, I realize what it has the potential to do to the bottom line of a functioning municipality when it's continually drained without being reimbursed. So what I pledge to do is to get out of the way. And what do you mean, "get out of the way"? I mean that I pledge to work with my other colleagues on the county council to let them know how damaging it is to our jewel, our crown jewel, if you will, to stretch them so thin that the services that they are used to are then put at a brink, because we don't ultimately want to come in and have to negotiate with you to give us the library at the county level in order for the library to continue functioning. You've proved in the past that you have the ability, the capabilities, and the wherewithal to function within your own realms and with your own limits, but what will end up happening over enough time, if enough time goes by, is that the double taxation will have such a toll that you won't be able to afford, if you will, and then you'll come and use those things as bargaining chips with the county, which may be what some of them want. But I will not let that happen on my watch.
Thank you.
So I think the bottom line... I always feel like you can't hear me. I think the bottom line is, will you have an advocate in your council member to fight for Tacoma Park and to get rid of tax duplication? And my answer is yes. I think what you've got to look at is, you hear my esteemed colleagues saying that we need to look at things at the state level. Well, he's been at the state level for the last eight years and hasn't done anything to help get rid of tax duplication or at least advocate there. There's no reason to believe that ultimately, if he gets to the council, he's going to fight hard for Tacoma Park. While I haven't, I'm not in Tacoma Park, or I haven't been in Tacoma Park for the last year, I've got 17 years of pain for those taxes. And I know for you and for me, getting the stormwater collection bills and paying those out, it feels like a pain, because you're dealing with the fact that we have a police department here in Tacoma Park. And in fact, Evan, let me just correct you a little bit here. Tacoma Park has a police department, but also Rockville has a police department, and Gaithersburg has a police department. So we're not unique in that way, but the issue is, we've got to have an advocate in Rockville on Maryland Avenue who understands the issues that folks here in Tacoma Park are dealing with, and tax duplication is a real issue, because as has been stated to the council and the OLO has studied, we would lose millions of dollars in revenue, and the city can't afford to lose those millions of dollars in revenue for our financial health. So I am committed to fighting for the end of tax duplication and working with my colleagues on the council, and working with the city council and the mayor to make that happen.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll begin right to my right. The next question is, what three issues that the county council has control over are the most important to you, not including education-related issues?
Is it everything but education?
Not including education-related issues. The three most important issues that the county council has control over are most important to you.
So you don't mean schools, you mean anything youth-related?
Not... Anything except education issues.
Well, because by education, you mean the schools, or do you mean...
Yes.
All right. So in that case, then the problem, one of the problems with the way we talk about education here is we talk about it like it's only the schools. The schools aren't the source of the problem. Our society is the source of the problem. Income inequality is the source of the problem. So in terms of what I'm very focused on, it's expanding funding for after-school programs, because while we have a strong school system in this county, we don't have the resources devoted to the young people in the places and the parts of the county, like Tacoma Park, where they really need those things. That's why I've started programs like Lunch and Learn. That's why I'm the president of Man Up, to bring those types of services to the city. Outside of direct youth development, I think that... Outside of direct youth development, I think that transportation, well, economic development is a big piece of it as well. Outside of Tacoma Park, well, in Tacoma Park, I want to see some strong development taking place at the, what used to be a Safeway on the corner of Unhampshire and University. It's the largest taxpayer in the county, in fact. It's now, it's a Chinese supermarket. And I'd like to see the county take some interest and make sure that the Crossroads-Langley area has some serious investment in it. Because one of the problems, if we don't take care of Crossroads-Langley, and especially if we don't take care of the areas of Long Branch right near it, we are gonna have serious problems with a loss of affordable housing in that area. We're gonna have serious problems with a loss of, I think, long-term loss of revenue in that area, if we displace too many of the residents. So, that's the second big issue that I would come up with. The third big issue that I think is very important is seniors aging in place. I'm a supporter of rent stabilization for senior citizens who are paying more than a third of their income in rent. And I think that that's really important in this county, because there are so many senior housing centers in the county, and there are multiple projects, at least five that I know of, to bring more senior housing to the county. We actually have one of the largest ones outside of Leisure World in Tacoma Park, that's Victory Towers. So I think another thing that we have to really spend some time on is making sure the seniors can afford to stay in Montgomery County, because it's so expensive to live here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Well, the first one, I'll say, and just to be clear, this is controlled by the county council, not the school board, is pre-kindergarten. I have been a huge advocate for pre-kindergarten, one of the leading ones in the Maryland General Assembly for many years, passed four pieces of legislation to expand pre-kindergarten, working with our delegate Sheila Hickson, the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, and others. And one put the state on a path to have pre-K for every four-year-old in Maryland. Another required them to apply for a grant that they got from the federal government to, that one, that brought in $50 million to expand pre-kindergarten. There's tens of thousands of kids now getting pre-kindergarten because of my work on this issue. Our county council, though, has fallen behind. We're falling behind DC and other Maryland counties. DC is now getting 69 percent of three-year-olds, 92 percent of four-year-olds into high-quality pre-kindergarten. That is a huge strategy to address our achievement gap. It's a great money saver in the long term, because every dollar we invest in pre-kindergarten saves $7 to $10 in the intervention strategies we use for kids that never learn to read early on. Second, I'd work on addressing income inequality. I've done a lot of work on that as well. Obviously, I've mentioned the work on living wage bills and raising the minimum wage. I've spent years passing legislation to protect pregnant workers. There's much more we could do at the county level to address our income inequality. The best predictor of a child's success in school is the income of their parents. We are always gonna have an achievement gap, as long as we have an income gap, and we need to address that at the county level. And third, much more greater accountability and oversight over government spending with greater transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have 20 seconds.
You did. Sorry. Pass. Number one, I would start with giving money back to small businesses to make sure they're able to grow and not go. Small businesses are under too much strain to operate as it stands now. I'm writing these as we go, guys, so it's not prefabricated answers. And then procurement transparency for other minority-owned businesses and small businesses that operate in Montgomery County. We need to make sure that when the construction and things that starts to bloom in the White Oak area are underway, that we wanna put in legislation that would mandate a certain percentage of those businesses and jobs come from Montgomery County residents, specifically and particularly District Five residents. Number two, I would work with the HHS, Department of Health and Human Services, to make sure that we have an adequate amount of services and providers for homeless resources and homelessness prevention. We have an alarming rate of homeless individuals in Montgomery County, and they all are underserved currently. All of them are underserved currently. Thank God, I'll be moving in one individual tomorrow into permanent housing. We have, under George Leventhal's leadership, a new model of housing and helping the homeless, which is a housing-first approach. So we are working with the ones that are most vulnerable, and we're housing them and then giving the support and services that they need. So we're moving another in tomorrow that makes seven total for this year. And then the third thing that I will work with is the library system, and also with the, well, the public services in general, to make sure that we have access to the information that the public services provides for families across the board. Because if you don't have the access to the information, the information might as well not exist. And so, what we need to do is realize that we have individuals at varying levels of intelligence that needs to have varying levels of clarification as to where and how to get the services that the county provides. That's the three things that I will work for.
Thank you.
So, I'll, uh-oh, and I messed up the mic. I always answer this question and feel like there's never enough time, but I'm gonna say jobs, jobs, jobs. The reality is, we've got to deal with job creation, we've got to deal with workforce development, and then the other side of it, in not talking about education, is we've gotta deal with how are people getting to and from their jobs. So, in terms of job creation, we've gotta deal with, how do we allow for development in Montgomery County in ways that supports job creation, but doesn't erode our values? And I think there's some real work that can be done on dealing with our regulations, dealing with the time it takes for small businesses to open, the amount of regulation and duplication in permitting services and all of that. There's technical work that's going on right now, where they're doing e-permitting, that is gonna be helpful, but there's gotta be some coordination and real work with the business community to really ensure that, in fact, our small businesses can grow, because they are the ones that create the most jobs in any economy. Then you gotta look at workforce development. We have assets in our county, and I talk about this all the time, that really need to be used better. We have Edison High School for Technology, which is a great place, but one of the issues is, it goes dormant at 4:00 PM. We do not see it used when there are adults who could be going in, learning how to be electricians. I know this is education, but it's workforce development, so I think I get a pass on that. I also know that we've got folks who could be learning how to be plumbers. Then the other side is, our high schools and our middle schools have computer labs that are dormant in the evenings, and this is where people could be learning English, our immigrant community could be learning English, so that they could get further into the economy and actualize their American dream and be successful for their families. And the transportation piece, we have got to address how to improve our transportation services. All of us on this day will tell you that we support the BRT. We know there's not enough funds, but we can improve public transportation and mass transit in the county.
All right. Thank you.
And despite the question saying outside, top three priorities outside of education, you're hearing near unanimous support for education being number-one priorities. And closing the achievement gap is my number-one priority, but much like has been said, taking it outside of the schools. Because what the county council report a month or two ago said is that, here in East County, here in District Five, our children of color are not learning to the best of their ability, like they are like students in the other parts of the county. And this is, this needs to be corrected immediately. It's only been growing worse over the last few years. And when you look at the demographics, you see that the same places where the achievement gap is greatest are the same places where our income gap is the greatest. And so, what we need to do is bring more economic equality to those communities, and that is jobs. Because when a child grows up in a home where there's food anxiety, housing anxiety, or economic anxiety, it doesn't matter how good that school is. They're not going to be programmed to learn, because they're in a fear-based place. And so, we do need to bring more jobs to that part of the county and to those communities. I'm the only one up here who, during the course of this campaign, has put together an economic development and closing the income gap plan. And in here, I have various proposals to help bring more jobs to this part of the county. One of them is that when we realize that 96 percent of the small businesses here in Montgomery, 96 percent of the businesses here in Montgomery County are small businesses, we need to nurture them. And that when we have large corporations that move here and we give them millions of dollars, let's tell them, 10 percent of the money that we as taxpayers are giving you through the Department of Economic Development for retention purposes, you need to reinvest 10 percent of the money we're giving you into our local economy. Accountants, lawyers, office furniture salesmen. And the only way, real quickly, the only way we can bring more jobs is by having a robust transportation infrastructure, which is number three.
Thank you. This has been touched on, but I wanted to make sure that everybody addresses it. What would you do to bring more economic development to District Five? And specifically, how do you think the county can best take advantage of the purple line? We'll start with Tom Hucker.
Well, the best way we could take advantage of the purple line is to get it built expeditiously and on time and on budget. It's, we need to break with the county tradition of all our large construction projects coming in over budget and with great delays. You've seen what happened with the Silver Spring Transit Center, now more than two years behind schedule. That's the last thing we can allow to happen with the purple line, and would have a very deleterious effect on our neighborhoods. So, that's one very important reason that you should elect somebody with strong experience at the state level, because this is gonna be managed by the Maryland Transit Authority, by the State Highway Administration. It's gonna have great nexus with all our state agencies, as well as the county, and there's no time, and it's nonsensical, to elect a perfect stranger and introduce them to cabinet secretaries and people that will be running a purple line tunneling project right through some of our neighborhoods. We have to make sure to get it done on time, and we need to elect a council member that has the experience working with those agencies to get them to do what their job and to do it correctly, to minimize the impact on our neighborhoods. I had a fundraiser last night with councilman, with Comptroller Francho, who's a big supporter, right on Bonafent Street at Mandalay. Mandalay's owners want to get this thing built quickly, essentially rip the scab off. They know it'll be, have some disruption, but they want to get it done, because they know it's gonna be transformative for Silver Spring and Tacoma Park. It's gonna bring lots of new customers to their business. It's gonna allow our students to get to University of Maryland, you know, in very short order to College Park, and our workers to get over to the west side of the county. But you're gonna need to elect somebody with the experience to get the job done without, with minimizing disruption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy, can you please repeat the first portion of that question?
Sure. The question was, if elected, what will you do to bring more economic development to District Five? And specifically, how do you think the county can best take advantage of the purple line?
I thought that's what it said, and I thought that that may have been lost in the, in translation. But what can we do to bring more economic development to District Five is to recognize that a large portion of the individuals that's experiencing the income inequality gap that Mr. Evan Glass mentioned. And by the way, I'm the only on the, on the dais on the stage here that has had an economic stability stabilization plan implemented by a municipality and ultimately accepted and implemented and funded by a governor of a state. I did not release my economic development plan, because I did not want it to be filtered and hijacked prior to us getting into office. So that's a point of fact right there. But what can we do is realize that we have so many people living with minor misdemeanor convictions in our district. And in order for them to work and to take advantage of any economic development that you bring to their neighborhood, they first have to be able to tell that employer what they can do for that employer, and also have that employer look past criminal convictions that may be 10, 15, 20-plus years old. I am right now looking for a job for a lady that is 44 years old, who was arrested because she did not know how to properly dispose of her father's estate. And her brother, the only brother, sued her in court and charged her with malicious intent to defraud him, but it was not that, it was not so. It was the, it was the result of a faulty Realtor taking advantage of a situation. So this woman had been in HR for over 20 years. They came and arrested her off of her job. So what I'm saying is that when you hear me talk about second-chance amendments and legislation, I'm not talking about the 19 or 20-year-old, even though they need it. I'm talking about the 40-some-year-old heads of households who still try to unpack and work through minor charges that they may have gotten when they were 18 or 19 years old, but now 30 years later, they're trying to find out, how do I have a career instead of a job? So in order for us to begin to talk about economic development and bring in jobs here, job owners and job developers will come when you create, if you build it, they'll come. If they know that they have a viable work pool that's in need of work and will be appreciative of that work, they will beat our doors down to become a part of District Five.
Thank you.
So there are a few things that have to be dealt with. The first question was economic development in District Five, and the other question was how to deal with the purple line. So, in terms of economic development in District Five, we've got a few things to deal with. One, we've got the White Oak Sector Plan, which is not in this area, but it is a very important section of District Five. And we have to start thinking about the whole district. I know that a lot of folks are talking to you and to us about Tacoma Park, but I'm hoping that you are looking at the whole District Five and understanding we have some work to do there. One, that district, that plan is scheduled for a vote now, I think it's July 29th. I know that July 1st is when they're gonna start looking at the transportation issues, which are critical. Nancy Florine just put this out and just dealt with that schedule, so we have to deal with that. It has to be supported. Unfortunately, that will, well, not unfortunately, fortunately, that should be voted on and approved before I get in office. But, the issue is then going to be, how do you push forward to make sure that, in fact, that plan can be actualized? It's one thing for the master plan to be approved, it's a whole nother thing for it to be executed on. So you've gotta deal with that. Then the other issue is, as I have been saying, we've got to deal with the rules that slow down small businesses being able to grow. That is where people are frustrated, and that's where jobs get created. When we make sure that folks that want to open up small restaurants, or want to open up small businesses in the area, are able to do it more quickly, it will make a real difference. Now, on the purple line, I'm really concerned about the execution of the purple line or the implementation of it. I have said that I do not support, and the council has not supported, upzoning in the Langley Park and the Long Branch area. That is important, but we've got to come up with a real conversation about what we are going to do to deal with some real development in those areas, so that the residents of Langley Park and Long Branch can take advantage of the purple line, just as much as the folks who may live in Silver Spring and ultimately in Bethesda.
Thank you.
Kathy, I appreciate the question, because it allows me to get into a few more issues that I have in my, on my economic development plan, which you can find on my website, evangeline.com. As Chris said, we do need to redevelop White Oak and Burtonsville. For me, that's a matter of economic justice. As I just talked about, when you have the communities of need, bringing jobs to those communities is an economic justice issue. And so, we'll be bringing science-based jobs, healthcare-based jobs, and as many of you are aware, Adventist Hospital, we will be moving up into that corridor as well, while remaining a strong presence here. Now, some of the other ideas I have are, quite frankly, reforming our antiquated prohibition-era liquor laws that are 80 years old. And as I've been talking with small business owners here in Tacoma Park and Silver Spring, the restaurateurs feel strapped, and many of them don't want to open up another restaurant in our community, in our county, because of these laws, and so they're just not doing so. As for the purple line, the county executive asked me to be on the Purple Line Implementation Advisory Group, knowing that I've been chair of the Silver Spring Citizens Advisory Board for the last couple of years, knowing what the local issues are here. So I am working on that task force to make sure that is implemented correctly, on time and on schedule. I used to be a former CNN journalist, and as we look at a lot of the transit projects in our community, they are not being done with proper oversight or management, whether it be the purple line, which I hope is done correctly, or the boondoggle, which is the Silver Spring Transit Center. Nobody was minding the shop. And so, as a former journalist, I'll be asking the tough questions, making sure we're on budget and on time. And as for any mitigation that is needed for small businesses, which is real, there are relocation efforts that we can do here in Silver Spring, because as it relates to economic development, there's a 30 percent vacancy rate in this part of the county for small businesses. So believe it or not, there's room for businesses to move to.
Okay.
So, one thing that we're all gonna talk about is how, is supporting the White Oak Science Gateway Master Plan. But I think that in order for the Science Gateway Master Plan to really work, it's supposed to bring 40,000 jobs to the community. One of the reasons, as president of Impact Silver Spring, I started, helped to start the first workforce development program in East County, specifically so that people in East County would be able to get those 40,000 jobs. Right now, a lot of those jobs are science-based, and that being the poorest part of the county, those people don't have science educations. So a big piece of what I think we can do on council is bring in East, develop an East County campus of Montgomery College. One of the things that I've been doing as the president of Impact Silver Spring is bringing Montgomery College to the East County Services Center. So I think ultimately, though, what we need to do is have a building, because that will bring in even more people to get stronger educations. It'll allow us to duplicate the universities of Shady Grove, which is two, nine local colleges. We'll be able to duplicate that on the east side of the county, to bring in real, long-term economic viability to the community. Specifically, in terms of how you bring that together with the purple line, one of the advantages of having someone who lives here advantages of having someone who lives here, is I know that that development with the Walmart and the Aldi's has too many vacancies in it right now. So, I've talked in a lot of places about business incubators. What I'd like to bring specifically to Tacoma Park, in that area right across from the Purple Line Station, is an international marketplace. Not really a flea market, a little bit more high-end that, but the basic concept of, of the county bringing in the funds to support things like our existing Crossroads Farmers Market, to bring in other international businesses, because if we do something like that, we'll create actual jobs for people who live in this community, and we'll leverage the culture that exists around New University and New Hampshire. And I think that's really the thing we need to be doing. Finally, I would like to form a commission that would look at all of our small business regulations, and come up with streamlining amendments. It's something that's been done in Massachusetts, and if Taxachusetts can come up with a way to get rid of 41 business regulations in six months, I think Montgomery County can as well.
Thank you. Okay, for the next question, I'm going to start with Mr. Thames, and work in the other direction across the dais, just to shake everything up here. Environmental issues are a big concern in Tacoma Park. And waste issues are a big cost and environmental challenge in the county and the state. Maryland last month released a draft zero-waste plan. Will you support keeping the bag fee and other waste reduction measures to reduce trash burned at the county incinerator? Mr. Thames?
The bag fee. As much as I hate to admit it, yes, I will ask to keep it in place, because I am an avid fisherman. And I am tired of breaking my line on bags, and thinking that I have a big fish, only to pull in a big clump of bags. So yes, I will keep the bag fee in place, because I have noticed a reduction in plastic bags in the rivers, specifically the Potomac River, since we have had the fee in place. I know that it causes my family a lot of trips to the grocery store, I mean, to the car, when we come from the grocery store, but we forget our reusable bags. But nevertheless, we don't have the bags in the trees along the side of the highways like we have. We are, we're in the process of cleaning them up now. And it's also making people begin to think about the environment that we live in. Even though I did not get the endorsement of the Sierra Club, I am a huge advocate for the environment. I often say that nature can survive without men, but men cannot survive without nature. So you tell me who needs who, you know? Because once we're gone, nature will reclaim all of these hardtops that we have put in. They, nature will reclaim all of the buildings that we've created. But we cannot survive without nature. So I am going to make sure that it stays on the, on the forefront of our mind, and that we always do things that are in the interest of the environment and of our community. And I lived in, in close, well, not close proximity, but I can remember going with my father to the dump, as a, as a little boy. We would load up the pickup truck, and we would ride up to these mountains, and we thought that these were tremendous mountains in the middle of the city, only to find out that it was mountains of trash. But we have to be mindful of what we're doing to the community, because we cannot grow these things and then call them parks when we're done with them. They're not parks, that trash is still there. So I will lead efforts to make sure that we are, as a community, as a county, forward-thinking when it comes to what we do to the community and to the, to the environment.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question, Kathy. As I said, I, I moved here to work for an environmental campaign immediately after college. I was recruited by a man who was the head of the U.S. Public Interest Research Group then, is now the national president of the League of Conservation Voters, whose support I have as well. I've been very proud to be such an active environmentalist, while I've been your delegate in the General Assembly. Jamie and I worked together to pass the Polluted Runoff Bill, which is now considered the most important bay cleanup bill of the last 10 years. It's raising tens of millions of dollars to clean up not just the bay, but all our tributaries. Sligo Creek, Northwest Branch, Rock Creek, and putting the responsibility on the whole state, not just Montgomery County and Tacoma Park. We here in Tacoma Park and Montgomery County had a stormwater fee for years, the rest of the state didn't. We're not the only ones creating pollution. Our bill made all the other jurisdictions have a fee as well. The Tea Party now calls it the rain tax, and they put in 20 bills to repeal it last year, and we managed to defeat all of them, and keep that very important landmark bill in place. Second, I was very proud to work with Governor O'Malley for the, the strongest clean energy bill in the last 10 years as well, the offshore wind bill, that's going to power most of eastern shore with clean energy, and be one of the biggest projects in the country. Of course, I've been a co-sponsor of the state bag fee. I will support the continuation of the bag fee at the, the county level. I also related, voted against adding incinerators to Tier One, so we're not subsidizing incinerators. I was on the losing side of that issue. And I support all, Brenda Platt's great efforts to expand composting in the state of Maryland. They're doing great work at the Blairs, actually. I toured them, and I want to introduce you to the folks doing good composting at the Blairs. That's why I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club and the Green Democrats, because of my 20-year history working on environmental issues and being an accomplished leader on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one, first, I do support the bag tax, and I'll do anything to keep it going. I'm a lifelong environmentalist, and you know, every time we have a debate, I learn something about Jeff that like, so I actually did grow up near a dump, so that's, it's kind of cool to hear about that. But, it was a bad thing growing up, because it made my neighborhood stink. And actually, I was, I had chronic bronchitis because of it, and that's actually how I got into the environmental movement and got into politics, it's interesting. So I was a lobbyist for the Sierra Club Legal Defense Fund, when I got out of law school for quite some time, then I went to go work on the Hill as an environmental legislative assistant. But, bringing it home again, I, I was also a member of the Task Force in Environmental Action with Tim Mail, that's how we got to get to know each other a few years ago. So a lot of the environmental work that's being done in this city right now, has been coming out of the recommendations of that report. The biggest one is probably hiring a sustainability coordinator for the city of Tacoma Park, to ensure that there is actually a person who has the responsibility for ensuring that work is going on, and that's a result of the work that Tim and I spent some time on, I guess it was 2009 or 2008, can't remember exactly what year. But, as county council member, I would like to, there's a composting program that's being piloted in the county now, that I'd like to expand county-wide. And I'm also a big fan of the work that the Young Activist Club has been doing over the past few years, trying to get some, and I'm always, if you've not seen a Young Activist Club meeting, you need to go to one and listen to those young people there, some of the most intelligent folks this community has ever created. But, I support their efforts to get rid of the polystyrene trays, and bring in something that's a little bit more, and wash, wash the trays that we have, so that we can, we have a dishwasher at Pioneer Branch, and you can go to their website and learn a lot about that. But, basically, I'm a lifelong environmental advocate, I will stay one. That's not going to change. I mean, like I said, I had chronic bronchitis, because I grew up next to a dump. I lived next to a coal-fired power plant. That's why I got into politics, actually, to deal with the environmental issues that a lot of communities of color don't realize, that we are overburdened by those issues. So, that's part of my heritage of, as an activist in this community, that's not going to change.
Thank you.
Yes, I will pledge to support the bag tax as it currently exists. I know last year, the council debated softening it, and I opposed those measures. As I said in my opening statement, I'm a founding board member of Conservation Montgomery, which is the county's largest civically-minded environmental group. I told you about the tree bill, which I helped pass, and we've also been working to mitigate stormwater runoff here in the county. Now remember, we're running for the county council, and I've been working on these issues here in the county for a very long time. You know, my dedication to making sure we have a sustainable environment goes as far as to having worked with our former council member Valerie Irvin, to create the very first public-private partnership community garden in Montgomery County. You know, Councilmember Irvin actually has built a bunch, helped build a bunch of community gardens. And the seed, if you will, that was planted in her mind to help devise that idea, was at the Civic Association that I was president of, South Silver Spring. Community of high rises, as I said, and we said, you know, we need some green space. And so I'd been working with her over the course of years, and if you drive down Georgia Avenue, there's the 7-Eleven gas station, and off in the far corner is about 25, 30 plots at the far corner. And it's a wonderful place where urban dwellers can go, and they can, they can plant their garden. Now, what the council also needs to focus on is the Sustainable Working Group's plan from 2011, where they committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 80%. And they put a lengthy report, "I am committed to ensuring that happens." Again, this is already at work here. I'm familiar with what the issues are, and I'm dedicated to moving them forward. So aside from the working group in reducing greenhouse gas by, greenhouse gas by 80%, we also want to reduce recycling by 70%, and make sure that there is zero waste from resources. And I know that Tacoma Park is taking the leading edge with, with all the things that you are doing curbside, and I would love to expand that county-wide as well.
Thank you.
So all of us will say, and, and all of us will support the bag fee, and I think that's great. The, the issue is, how do we help get to a zero-waste initiative county-wide? Well, I think one of the ways that we really get there is to look at what we're doing in our schools. So I got a lot of heat, and the folks didn't like what I had to say when I didn't support building a dishwasher at Pioneer Branch Elementary School. And I appreciate that heat. But what I did learn from that, and what I learned from working with and bantering back and forth, if you will, from the young activists, is that I could get some things done. And what I have been able to get done, is I've had, I've forced the school system to keep looking for options to get rid of polystyrene trays. And today, if you had been listening to the board meeting that we had, in fact, we have a recyclable tray that will be used in our schools. So we started with Francis Scott Key Middle School, and we'll be going to, all of our trays will now be recyclable. That's a beginning step in the right direction. And I know our young activists wanted to see a dishwasher at the school, but what we have been able to do because of their work, and because of my persistence with our administration, is to get to a place where we have recyclable trays. What I'd like to get to is compostable trays, because if we use compostable trays, and we can get the school system to compost, think about how many lunches are served. It's about 20-plus thousand that are served daily. 20,000 lunches served daily. If we were able to compost that, those, the food from those meals, that would be rather significant. That's the kind of stuff that I'm trying to work on and build here in the county. And I have the relationships with park and planning, I have the relationship with my council members, and I have the relationship with the board to get those things done, and to make sure they in fact are sustainable.
Thank you. The next question is, can you talk about at least one specific thing, one or more specific things, that you would do to improve economic equality within the district and within the county? And it goes first to Tom Hucker.
Economic equality?
Economic equality.
Well, we're going to have to vigorously enforce the new minimum wage increases, both at the state level and the county level. It's, they're historic bills that we passed. And at the state level, it's going to give a long overdue raise to 400,000, long, you know, hard-working Marylanders. It's great we're talking about it so much tonight, it would have been good to have some of these voices right in front of us at the committee. We had 10 panels of opponents testifying against the bill. I was very glad to cast the deciding vote to send it to the House floor to sure, to sure passage. But, what we've seen, since I serve on the Economic Development Committee, Economic Matters Committee of the House, we see a lot of employers cheat and not misclassify their workers, classify a lot as independent contractors. We've passed a misclassification bill to address that, but many low-wage employers end up both misclassifying their workers, not paying their workers, there's rampant wage theft. I've worked with the employment lawyers, Tom Gagliardo's in the audience, and a number of other groups at the, the local level, to pass laws to crack down on wage theft, because there's a lot in our, in our economy, which is heavily retail and heavily based on construction. Unfortunately, there's a lot of employers that don't pay their workers, discriminate against their workers, misclassify their workers. We can raise wages all we want, and that's hard enough to do. We have to make sure those workers are getting the wages they deserve. We also have to increase our, our spending on workforce development, to get every student and every worker that needs a job, the skills that they need, to prepare them for the jobs that really exist. We need to work more closely with our private sector to map out the skills, and especially our rapidly changing industries, science and, and healthcare and, and others, that change so rapidly, in many cases, our community colleges and the curriculum, and our high schools and community colleges don't catch up. And finally, if Tennessee can afford to send students to community college for free for two years, why in the world can't we do it in Montgomery County, in the richest state in the country?
Thank you.
So, I've been working for the past couple of years, actually, as president, well, I just became president of Impact Silver Spring, I've been vice-president for the past couple of years. But we've been working for a couple of years to bring Montgomery County, I mean, Montgomery College specifically, to East County. If you want to improve the economic condition of people, you want to reduce income inequality, you need to train them, you need to educate them, period. That's what worked for me, that's the reason why my grandfather was a day laborer, and I'm a lawyer, because I went to school. And that's what we need to do for the people of this community. If you want to reduce income inequality, we need to take, take a world-class, one of the best community colleges in America, and put it in our poorest community. That will be the impact, right? So it's, it's, and the reason why having Montgomery, like, Impact Silver Spring already teaches adult English literacy courses, financial literacy courses, and entrepreneurial support courses. But what the university can do is scale up at a level that Impact just can't do. That's why, as council member, what I, it's not just about having them in the East County Services Center. One thing we need to do is get them a building, like they have here in Tacoma Park. Because when you do that, first off, you have to remember, only half the kids that graduate from schools in this county even go to college. And half the kids that go to Montgomery College need math remediation courses, and another, smaller number need English remediation courses. So, the kids aren't getting it from the school system, right? So we need to take an institution that has a success rate, like Montgomery College has, have them help educate our young people, get them into the schools early, you know, working with them in the high school, high school before they even get to college. But the key is, that institution is already successful at reducing income inequality. So if there's one thing that we can do, it's look at the successes that we already have in this county, and support them and bolster them. I've been working for a couple of years to help them get started in East County, that's starting to happen now, it's a part of the workforce development program that Impact Silver Spring started, with the help of Ike Leggett and a lot of other stakeholders. None of them, none of them happens alone. So I think the key is, keep on the track with that work, and as council member, I'll be able to scale it up, and get some financing in place to get them that space.
Thank you.
There's actually a large consortium right now, that is trying to figure this problem out here in Montgomery County. It's called Moving Montgomery Forward. And it is a coalition of educators, educational leaders, nonprofit leaders, and business owners. And what we are trying to do, I've been going to a bunch of these meetings, one was recently held at the Discovery Channel, it is figuring out the pathways to learning. Helping these children, these youth, go through our school system, and pair them up with, with job creators, who can give them the skills that they need. And right now, where we are, is we have some of the nonprofit sector, which is growing and trying to figure out that organizational structure. The educators are doing their part, and they're working internally at Montgomery College, University of Shady Grove. And where we're missing are the jobs, right now. Because when we go to these meetings, when I've gone to these meetings, at 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning, trying to figure this out, the business people aren't there. And it's twofold, one, it's because it's during the daytime, and they're actually doing their job. But secondly, it's because we need more jobs here. So, we're setting the system up, and we need to keep enticing more businesses to come here, so that we can finally push this over the edge. Now, the other aspect about closing the income gap and creating equality, is really making sure that here in Montgomery County, we help our small and minority-owned businesses. The Department of Economic Development, I believe, has a track record of trying to find some shiny unicorn, which is a Fortune 500 company, and attract them to Montgomery County. And this is how many they've brought over the last few years, zero. And what we need to do is really bolster the 96% of the businesses that are small businesses with fewer than 50 employees. We need to change the way our RFP process is done, so that we can help our small businesses grow, because when they grow, we'll have the jobs.
Thank you.
So, everybody's talking about scaling up, which is exactly what we have to do. And the issue is, how do we make that happen? We've got an institution in our county that is underutilized. Our schools are underutilized, that is just a fact. I'm going to keep saying it. One simple thing, I know I'm going to have to repeat this, because it's a simple idea, but it can have a significant impact. If we dealt with bringing our immigrant community into their local schools, and helping them to learn English, so that they could come further into the economy, it will make a difference. I think the difficulty folks have is how to sit down and have the conversation about how we get that done. It's just a conversation between the administration and the school system, and McHale, Montgomery County Adult English Literacy, I believe that's the right phrase for it, okay? And really the council, to make sure that we put the pressure on the school system to use our assets effectively. But there's not the coordination. And Evan, you're right, because I've been at the Montgomery Moving Forward meetings, and over and over again, you don't have business people there. But one of the reasons why business people aren't there... But one of the reasons why business people aren't there is because nobody's telling them about the meetings. All of us have had to meet with business folks to try and raise funds for our campaigns. Some have been more successful than others, but when you talk about MMF, most folks don't even know about it. The ones who are the quote-unquote "big players" in the county, they don't know about it. That's one of the problems that we have. We do not have real coordination. We do not have folks reaching out. The Department of Economic Development is not really working for small businesses and working for poor people in our county. We need an advocate for those who do not have, so that they can be represented well.
Thank you.
In eighteen sixty-three, Abraham Lincoln answered this question when he said on November nineteenth that we have a government, I'm paraphrasing here, a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. That's what we need again. This is community service, not corporate service. So, if any of us would have you to believe that we know how to address the economic inequality in the United States of America, I guarantee you that they will put us at the top of every World Bank. They would elect us to the presidency of every country, because as reports have stated, there's the one percent, and then there's us and the ninety-nine percent. So, the income, the economic inequality will have to be an ongoing proposition as to how do we address it. But the first thing that we do is come into our communities to shore up what we already have. And then, look at what's already working and begin to duplicate that for us, not what works in other areas. We have to be in tune with what works with us. And then, if we're really concerned about the economic inequality, we will then begin to come out of the corners that we currently reside in and go into other unforeseen, uncharted territories that we're not used to being, and tell them what works for us. If it worked for us over here, we're a part of the county too. We're a part of the same district that you're a part of. We are your family members. We care about you. That's how we address economic inequality. But it's not in the best interest of business owners or businesses to give the answers to how to decrease their profits. Why? Then they won't be as profitable and as influential, they think, as they are now. But if we're really concerned about the people, it's time to expose the truths and let them know that we need each other to make it in this day.
Thank you. And this will be the, the last question. How would you address the most pressing needs of seniors in Tacoma Park? For example, are you in favor of the aging-in-place villages that are forming all over the Metro DC area? And would you encourage the council on one in Tacoma Park or others in the area? And we'll start with Mr. North.
Sure. I, I'm a strong supporter of aging-in-place and the villages that are being formed, like Silver Spring Village, and a strong supporter of the work that activists like Wolfgang are doing right here in Tacoma Park. I think that the best thing the county can do is enact the policy of rent stabilization for senior citizens. Now, I gotta take a second to explain this, because lots of times, people hear rent control, and they're like, oh, that's never gonna pass to Montgomery County, 'cause the developers are too powerful. Developers often support rent control for senior citizens. Because what I'm talking about is a, is a situation where you get a tax credit to the developer who doesn't raise the rent on the, on the, on the senior citizen. So, the, the senior gets a benefit, and if their rent stays the same, if they're, if they're paying more than a third of their rent, their rent stays the same. And then, the owner of, the landlord gets the benefit, that they get a credit against their income from that property. So, it's been supported in New York State, it's been supported in New York City, it's been supported in Washington DC. I think that if we do that here in Montgomery County, especially because, again, I know of at least five senior development projects on, like, being planned right now. And there are several senior citizen, senior housing centers in the district and across the county. For some reason, people seem to like building those places here. So, let's take advantage of that by creating a system that will help the developers earn a profit from having senior housing, but also make sure that senior citizens can afford to age here. This is a very expensive part of the country. I think the self-sufficiency income for a family of three is like seventy thousand dollars. So, we need to do whatever we can do to support the ability of seniors to live independently and to maintain their dignity, 'cause that's really the most important part of this. I've, I've met with seniors recently, talking about code violations in their buildings, talking about broken doors at their buildings. And the problem is, these are, these are the greatest generation folks. These are the folks that got me the freedom to vote. These are the people that, that created our America, and they're not safe, and they're not warm in the wintertime. I mean, that's ridiculous. So, one of the first three things I will do, I shouldn't forget that, the first thing I'm gonna do, if you put me on council, is make sure that we protect our senior citizens with a rent stabilization law for senior renters.
Thank you.
I, I know here in Tacoma Park, there are various individuals who are working on a senior village. Wolfgang and I have talked about that and trying to replicate what is currently in its infancy in downtown Silver Spring. But if you go into Washington DC, Dupont Circle and Capitol Hill have very full-fledged senior villages. And many people are looking at those as guiding lights. And I'm glad that that is already underway here in Tacoma Park. And one of the other ideas or policies that we need to really step it up in order to support our seniors and people who are aging in place is really beefing up our transportation infrastructure. Because as people choose not to drive or incapable of driving, we need to make sure that the ride-on bus service is running on a timely schedule and that it, we have safe bus stations and bus stops for them to be at during inclement weather. And right now, as you probably well know, there are a lot of issues with our public transportation system. Quite frankly, I think our county council needs to actually invest more and not just give us lip service when it comes to public transportation. My husband and I have one car for the two of us, so I am fully committed to making sure that we have a public transportation infrastructure that works for everybody. And so, that is a piece of the puzzle that I would like to invest heavily here to help support our seniors.
Thank you.
So, I think all of us, again, will say yes to, to supporting senior villages. I think, well, look, I, I deal with my eighty-eight-year-old mom who, who lives in Ohio and is still in the house that, that I grew up in, and my sister and my brother are there helping her and taking care of her. But they don't have a car. And I think it's a rare moment that I have to agree with Evan, and, but, I think that, well, it actually isn't, but, you know, just, you know, we're in competition here. The, the, one of the most important things to do, seriously, is to deal with transportation. It's great to have resources, but if you don't have a way to get to the resources that exist, and this county is resource-rich, but it is very difficult. If you wanted to go, if you have a doctor's appointment, and you live here, and you wanna go to Bethesda, God bless you. It's gonna take a while. You gotta deal with traffic, you gotta deal with unreliable transportation, okay? So, you're looking at, if you're doing ride-on, it's gonna be a challenge, okay? We do not have services to support our seniors getting across county and through this county. We've got to make the county more accessible, but there's another part that we have to deal with. And that is making sure that we truly regionalize our services in a way so that people can have access to it. And really, look at where we have communities, where folks are aging in place. So, as, as Terrell said, I think it was Terrell that said, Victory Towers is a wonderful opportunity here in Tacoma Park, and it's a large center, probably the largest one other than, than Leisure World. But we've gotta make sure that the seniors that are there can get access to the services that they need. How do we make sure that there are medical services close by? How do you make sure that recreation is close by? How do you make sure that folks can get to food?
Thank you.
And I end.
Thank you.
Well, it seems like he was over here reading my notes, because he ended his question with the way that I began mine, which is, for the seniors, and, and I hate to say the seniors, I refer to them as my grandparents. I'm one old country boy, and so I really believe that family is a strong sense of what guides me and directs me. So, we have to have, make sure they have access to healthcare. Not affordable healthcare, but just healthcare, however they need to get it, quality healthcare, they need to have it. Access to food. We have so many seniors that's going hungry, because they don't have enough food to make it throughout a month. And the pride exists, much like it was in the nineteen thirties when welfare was introduced, and the older generation, you have to remember that this is the generation whose fathers in their thirties said that, "I don't care if I don't make a dime. We not eating government food, so we will eat beans and dust until we are full, or tell ourselves we full." That's the same mentality that we have now, which is presenting the seniors, the, the grandparents from asking for help. So, we have to go ahead and look at what we already know to be a truth and give them what we know they need, regardless of whether they ask for it or not. So, we need to make sure they have access to the food and also need to have access to viable mortgage lenders. We also are in a, in a phase right now where property taxes are skyrocketing, and the seniors did not anticipate this. And, and so what they're having now is a lot of predatory lending going into that, that age demographic. And we have a lot of the community members losing their homes in Montgomery County, because they have, they did not understand the contract that they were signing. And now that it's two years into it, they can no longer afford to make the monthly payments, which was the plan all along. But we have to prevent that by coming in as a county council representative and being a gatekeeper for individuals making loans in our district, in our county specifically and particularly. But we also wanna reduce the taxes that they, that the community is having to pay. With them being retired, when they retire, the majority of the taxes that they were responsible for should go away as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. These are not two-minute questions. And, and, but this is close to my heart, as more and more, I feel like a senior in training every morning. Okay, a few answers. One is yes on aging-in-place and the senior villages, of course. Two, it's been said, but it's absolutely true, we need to improve our transportation system and in a multimodal, complete streets approach. We need to improve our pedestrian safety, we need to rebuild our sidewalks, we need more sidewalks, we need enhanced crosswalks, we need much more reliable and more frequent bus service. We need to keep the pressure down on the fare box, so we're not imposing big fare box increases on seniors that can't afford it. I'm glad we have free classes at Montgomery College. We need a lot more, I think, for trained seniors on email and social media and on computers in general. That's being done in other jurisdictions, a little bit more than, than in our area. And I think there's a, there's a real yawning gap there to make sure our seniors feel connected and are using all the tools they can use to feel connected to their loved ones and friends and family across the, across the country. We need to increase our services generally for seniors, but especially for low-income seniors, and we need culturally competent seniors for, culturally competent services, including translation, for a lot of our immigrant and low-income seniors in particular. We need more programming. We need, you know, we have a rapidly aging county, and we have, we, we need a senior center, I think, in this corner of the county, because people shouldn't have to get so far to get to the nearest one. We don't at all take advantage of all the state grants for both housing and community development that we leave on the table in Montgomery County. When I'm on the council, I'm gonna make sure we're working closely with the state to, to go after every dollar we can, bring it back to Montgomery County, so we can provide those services, provide more senior housing, provide more senior services. And finally, we need to make seniors feel safe by continuing to reduce crime. That's why both police org, my, my track record of working on this is why both police organizations in our area have endorsed, well, all three, actually, including the Tacoma Park Police, have endorsed me, because of my track record working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I note that it's nine o'clock, but we got a little bit of a late start, about ten minutes late, and so I'm assuming we still have about ten minutes for closing statements. And so, we're gonna start closing statements with Mr. Glass.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you all for attending tonight. We got twenty-one days to go until this election, so I think this is our last form, so I'd like to do a selfie or a picture to, for memories. But nonetheless, the reason I'm running is because I love our community. I've been dedicated to it for the last ten years, president of two civic associations, chair of the Silver Springs Citizens Advisory Board, and I have a plan to bring economic justice to our part of Montgomery County, which will help our children, help our schools. And I have a plan to build more green space in our community, so that our urban areas do not become concrete jungles. Go to my website, you'll see that plan there. All too often, you walk around and we see pocket parks, which are nothing more than concrete slabs with a few benches. Evan, I, I have a plan after working with our community, working with our government, working with our developers, to build real green space in our downtown areas. And I also am the only person here on this dais who got a one-hundred percent rating from the Action Committee for Transit because of my commitment, true commitment to public transportation. And I say all this because this is the local leadership you need and deserve on the county council. With no disrespect to my two friends here, we're not running for the Board of Education, and we're not running to be a delegate in Annapolis. We're running for the county council. And that's why The Washington Post and The Gazette have both endorsed me, because I have a track record here in our community, bringing different groups together with a common progressive vision. I've been doing it for ten years. I pledge to do it for you as well. I hope I can earn your vote on June twenty-fourth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not your friend, too. So, if you wanna know about Terrell North on the twenty-fourth, why you should vote for Terrell North, come here every Tuesday night and talk with the twenty-five to thirty young people that you'll see here that we work with. Go to the Food Pantry at Essex House one Saturday per month, which feeds the, literally, the poorest one-hundred-and-thirty families in Tacoma Park. Drive down Flower Avenue next year, when there will be, when it rains. So, and see how, and, and drive down the street, see how safe it is. Actually, park on the street and see how the water isn't cascading over the streets. You do those three things, you will see the impact of the work that I've been doing in this community for several years. When we get a sustainability coordinator and someone is putting out a report every year, tracking what's going on in this city in terms of sustainability, again, those are the ways you're gonna know who Terrell North is. All of us can sit up here and promise you anything under the sun, but the reality is, I've been going across this district for the past year, telling people about the things that I've been doing here with your help, and asking them to put me on county council, so I can, I don't call them Tacoma Park values when I go to other neighborhoods, I'm not gonna lie to you. But they are Tacoma Park values. And I go across this district, I go to Indian Spring, I go to Burtonsville, I go everywhere where they got people. And I talk about the things that we're doing here together, and I ask to be put on council so that I can do those things across the entire district and across the entire county. So, at the end of the day, there's really, you, whether you know my, knew my name before tonight or not, you walk around, ask the mayor, he may have been endorsing somebody else, but ask the mayor about the work I do in this city. Or, better yet, ask Fred Schultz, who has endorsed me, Councilmember Fred Schultz. Ask Councilmember Jared Smith, who has endorsed me. Ask former Councilmember Hank Prensky, who has endorsed me. Ask former Councilmember Donna Victoria, who has endorsed me. Ask former Councilmember Ruben Snipper, who has endorsed me. Although, he's in Italy, he's hard to reach. Unfortunately, we can't ask former Councilmember Kay Daniels Cohen, who did endorse me, but she passed away. So, the bottom line of it is, I'm here for you, period. North on twenty-fourth.
Thank you. We got a little bit out of order, so I'm gonna put us back in order and pick up on Chris Barkley now and then go around.
Shift.
Yeah, we're going, we're going this way.
It's all good, Terrell. It's all good. So, you know, elections are really about family in a lot of ways. At the end of the day, we try and protect our family. We try and do things that are in the best interest of our families. And when I moved here in nineteen ninety-six with my family, we were in the part of Tacoma Park that was still in Prince George's County. We didn't even know that, that Tacoma Park was in, in two counties. We, we weren't aware. 'Cause all we were concerned about was there, there's a park at the end of the street, we got a nice house, we have someplace to raise our children. But the more I got involved, the more I realized, you know what? I gotta know what's going on in my neighborhood, 'cause my kids are gonna go to this school or they're gonna go to that school. And I wanna make sure that my community is what I want my kids to be raised in. And that's what got me involved in the school board. But once I got there, I realized, can't solve all the problems at the school board level. We've gotta deal with getting into the community and working with families, working with children, and figuring out bigger solutions to these huge problems that we have. Montgomery County is a wonderful place to raise our families. Tacoma Park is a great place to get things done. It's a great place to raise our families. But we've gotta make sure that you have a representative who understands the local issues, not somebody who's just stuck in one zip code, somebody who understands this whole county, has the temperament, has the relationships, and has done the hard work to make sure that we can be well-represented, that you can raise your family here and be satisfied, and ensure that they've got jobs, they've got wonderful transportation, our seniors can age-in-place, and most importantly, whatever your kids decide they wanna do, they have the chance to do it, because they have gotten a great education.
Thank you. Mr. Dems?
I'm sorry. Um, so, with this being the last forum and, um, me being the new kid on the block, again, I, I've been writing this out, so I'll give you the honor here. Thank you for allowing me to present myself to you tonight. I hope that I was able to show you that I'm more than a preacher. I'm most of all a thinker. I have new ideas that many say are common sense, and those new ideas is what we must have going into a new, uncharted territory. We have an increasing crime rate, we have defunct government services, and we have a need to assess and convey, in straight talk, the needs that we have across the board. But overall, what we, what I want to do is represent you. To me, this endeavor is about community service and not corporate service. While we have to be good corporate hosts, we have an obligation, and we must be about the people first and the community first. I think that the pieces that's missing and not on the minds of many people that I bring to the table, which happens to be the most critical pieces, are the, is the ability to relate, tolerate, and celebrate everyone. With the proposals that have been voiced tonight in the community, the people aren't at the top of every agenda. That's the problem. The agenda is out, out of order. I know and I believe that if you, if we fail the people, we have failed the people. I want to make sure that the people are represented. I wanna make sure that you are represented. I want to make sure that obstructions are moved out of government. The issues that were talked about, those are low-hanging fruits. It was easy for the candidates to talk about them tonight, because the conversation had started years ago. But as we go forward into 2015 and beyond, we must begin to talk about the fruit that's at the top of the trees, that's been out of everyone's reach or out of everyone's eyesight and posed to top of the entire tree. Jeffrey Thames, number five on the ballot, in District Five with five children.
Thank you.
June 24th. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching at home. If you're with us at this point, you're really a glutton for punishment, so I, I, I feel you. I asked for your vote for three reasons. First, our district, Tacoma Park, and the whole east side of the county get short-changed from the county budget every single year. And yet, we have more vulnerable populations in our part of the county than any, anywhere else. We have more families in poverty, we have more immigrant families, we have more parents of students with special needs, we have more elderly dependent on our county services. We need an experienced hand to go to Rockville, to represent this district, and to bring back every dollar we deserve. We as individuals and we as Tacoma Park. We need also an experienced progressive champion to represent this district, because this is the progressive heartbeat of the county. We can't count on council members from other parts of the county to drive a progressive agenda on the county council. That's exactly what I've been doing in Annapolis, as your elected representative, and it's exactly what I'll be able to do on the county council. Second, the council, of course, is a legislative body. Let's not kid ourselves about that. The job is to represent a district, to protect its interests vis-à-vis the district, the interests of other districts, and to pass legislation. I'm the only one up here, there's a lot of talented people up here, but I'm the only one who has repeatedly succeeded and operated in a legislative body and been able to bring people together and build consensus to get policy achievements on the books. That's what the job is, and I'm the only one that's done it. If I can succeed in a much larger and more conservative, bicameral, bipartisan body of the Maryland General Assembly, of course, I'm gonna be able to succeed for this district in Rockville. And third, the biggest challenges facing our district every, in the coming years, funding for our schools and services, school construction, minimizing the disruption from the Purple Line, addressing the achievement gap, all require a great partnership with the state. There's no time for on-the-job training, there's no time to be introducing a perfect stranger to cabinet secretaries. That is not a recipe for success, it's a recipe for disappointment. There's too much at stake for our neighborhoods and our district. In the coming years, we need an experienced, proven hand, proven progressive leadership, a long track record of accomplishment. That's why I asked for your vote. Thank you.
I wanna thank all of the candidates very much, and also thank the people who came out. This whole forum has been shown live on Tacoma Park City TV, and it will also be shown again between now and the election. So, individuals in Tacoma Park who are not able to be here, were not able to watch it, will get other chances to see you all and to, and to hear your words and to hear your positions on things. So, I wanna thank you all for being here, thank you for giving your time, and the best of luck to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
(applause)